This is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is Mr. McClure supposed to be here?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, by the way, the wrong place, too.
Somebody's guarding the car. Okay. We have one item on the agenda, and then we have a couple of other quick items to discuss. What's up is the selection of the signage consultant. We have two finals, and I'll open that for board discussion at the present time. I don't think there'll be any resolution until we make a decision, so I'm open for comments from the board. Anybody have anything to say about it?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I do. I didn't know.
Go ahead.
Oh, you were gonna...well, it's...you open it, David.
You want me to open?
Just working. Yeah. I've been confused about this ever since we got the two responders. And I even looked at the RFP again this morning, and what the RFP asked for was the first phase, which is the design to develop in a master plan to be approved and developed an RFP to determine the cost for the signage and landscaping. Don Bell did a really good job of what he presented, but actually, he rolled everything together. He rolled...he didn't price the cost of the design and putting together this master plan and the costs associated with it, so we don't really know what that cost is. What he did, he put together a sign package, $190,000, and a landscaping package of, I think, $206,000, for a total of $396,000. And my assumption has to be that all of his design and his master plan is all rolled up in that cost. I don't know. So I don't know how we can give this guy this job and say until we know what it's gonna cost to put together a master plan and an approach. Now, Tangram, on the other hand, they responded probably in the right manner for the first phase. It's to design an RFP development for the signage and landscaping, but that cost is $60,000. Sounds to me a little high. Now, the upside to that, I think they have the most creative approach and the right ideas. They got the best approach for the management managing the program. But if you read into the body of this thing, they've got some...like, the main entrance, they want to relocate the main entrance into the median. Right now, it's visible, and they talk about visibility, but if you push it back into the median, you wouldn't be able to even see it until you get to the intersection. So in that particular situation, I think they're maybe a little bit wrong. And on the south entrance, they're talking about a bus stop, and it's a chip shot away from the school. There's not ever gonna be a bus stop there. So...and the price includes four trips and other costs, although in the body of the document, he said he'd make a trip whenever it's necessary. I don't know if that's extra cost. Pittman Landscaping is very small. They only have two employees. And their ideas and their approach during the presentation looks to be more than we can afford. They got new signs in different locations on all the entrances. They got tree removals. And if you make an assumption that Don Bell's numbers were pretty good, and add the $60,000, and $190,000, and $206,000, I know it's two different entities, we're a half a million dollars. And I don't know. What we need to do is develop a budget on this tag-on thing and say, "This is what we're gonna spend. We're not gonna spend anymore." If not, what we're gonna end up doing is throwing $60,000 out there to develop a master plan that we might not be able to afford to implement. Then we'd come back and say, "Well, we already spent $60,000. We need to spend the rest of it, or we're gonna lose the $60,000." You're not...we don't have apples and oranges to compare here. So I'm still confused. I don't really know which is the right way to go about it. I don't...I don't wanna...without having a number, a firm, hard number to look at, at the end of the day, we might be starting down a road that we might not be able to...and I know I'm kinda rambling, but we don't have any comparison here. I don't know what Don Bell's cost would be to develop the master plan. I like what he's presented on the first presentation, not necessarily on the second. But until we know that cost, I don't see how we can pick that guy, because we're gonna have to RFP all this other stuff. You can't just assume that this sign package and landscaping, unless we decide otherwise, that just turn him loose on it. But that's not the intent of the program. That's not the way the program is supposed to proceed. So I'm sorry for the rambling, but that's my thoughts.
Okay, Larry?
Studying it, I agree with Dave a lot of aspects there. I don't want to get into a sign thing that costs us three times what we've kinda allocated for it. The other thing that I'm...it really concerns me with Tangram is the fact that they're gonna be in charge of the project, and they're based out of Denver. That's a long ways away. I know they're gonna make four trips here, possibly more trips, but I'm sure we're gonna get charged for them if they make any more trips. I really don't feel real comfortable with an outfit that far away. Now, do we need to rebid this and put an exact figure on the thing? I don't know. I simply do not know the answer to that. I'm like Dave. I like some of the things that Bell has put in. Can we hold the cost down? I'm not positive.
I have to go along with both Dave and Larry. I like Dave Bell. They're local. I think we need to bring them back and ask them for a better figure of actually what it's gonna cost. And give them a chance to answer our RFP in a more definitive manner, and then go from there.
Kurt?
I'm kinda like Dave. I just tried to compare the two companies, and it's like apples and oranges. It's two different approaches. I guess my biggest concern with Tangram is that they want about 50 grand upfront to do the design work, and if we don't like what they designed, then we're out 50 grand. At least with Dave...or Don Bell, we kinda have a pretty good idea of what we might get for our $250,000. And I also like their list of clients. If you look at their presentation, they're doing business with SeaWorld and Busch Gardens and Disney World and all these big, high-profile companies that have signage and marketing people on their staff, so for them to win bids from those type of companies makes me pretty comfortable with...excuse me, Don Bell. The other thing about, like Larry said, these people are based in Colorado. They plan four trips, and in their plan, they said they would not charge us for any more than four trips. That was a maximum amount of money. But they're also...their master plan is for 12 months. They want to take 12 months to do this project, and most of it is design work. And in their presentation, the examples that they gave in terms of the signage they've done in the past, I wasn't really overly impressed with that. And that kinda concerns me, that if that's the path they're gonna go down, I think we're gonna waste a lot of money on design work. So I guess I would be more comfortable with Don Bell myself. And today's point, that's the other thing. The design work has been rolled right into the price of the sign, so how do we know if that price they quoted for that sign is a competitive price or not? But again, he's the only guy on the dance floor right now, so...and I think we can hold the cost at $250,000. You know, your $200,000 landscape, that's for landscaping down Ortega and everything. And I think we're really more concerned about the landscaping upfront here, which was around 60 grand. So I think we can do it all for 250, I think.
Well, first of all, we can control the budget. It's our budget and our money, and we can set whatever framework we can set. So in terms of getting away from it, when you go into Phase One, you set certain benchmarks in certain contexts, and they have to fit to it. What bothers me about Bell, and make no mistake, they're a very good company. I mean, the signs of some of the clients that Kurt referenced and so forth, no question about it. But if you notice their proposal, there is not one mention of any of our existing situations that need to be upgraded or corrected. Not one. What they've done is taken all of our signs and put their signs in place of our signs. There's no creative discussion at all, and that's what you're paying for in Phase One. You're paying for a creative group to come in and look at this community and assess our strengths and our weaknesses, and then prepare a signage system. Not a bunch of signs, but a signage system to make this community look really good. And in the consulting business, Kurt and Larry, it doesn't matter where they are as long as they fulfill their requirements. Okay? And if they have a bunch of deliverables, it's up to them to satisfy that. They don't tell us the number of trips. We're in contact with them, and we're setting the ground rules. The thing that I like about Tangram is the fact they've taken a look at each of our various components. If you remember in the presentation, they talked about the circles. They talked about the placement of the signs going into the circles. They talked about how busy some of our signs were. We got none of that from Bell. Not one thing. And that's what the first phase is. It's a creative phase. It's a design phase. And then Bell, with anybody else, has full opportunity to bid on the second phase. And if we set a budget of $200,000 or whatever it is, then they'll have to stick to it, and we'll have to accept what we can get for that money. The thing that does bother me about the Tangram group, and perhaps some of it of Bell, is the landscape aspect of this is really turned out to be a very secondary issue. And I think where your landscaping comes in is when you have your signs and your program, and then you're matching that. So that's a Phase Two thing. And that's, again, that we can set the way we want it set regarding the cost of it. It was disappointing that Mr. Pittman, and as Supervisor Holbeck said, was a two-man shop, did not show up. And he had a conflict, but that's the way it is. I would really question whether or not we need to pay for any kind of landscaping services, our designs in Phase One. I don't think we get to that point until Phase Two. I liked the Bell guy. This guy from Avon Park, what's the name of their group?
Edgewood.
Edgewood, yeah. I thought he was pretty creative. And he's not a landscape architect. He's a landscape contractor, but I liked his work. And we can set Phase One to where we're not really talking about landscaping and save a few bucks and put that into Phase Two. But if we go with a hard sign company in Phase One, what we're gonna get is what we've got now parroted back to us with better signs. And signs are a problem, but also our signage system is a problem. You go into the first circle again, you got, what, nine listings about where to go? There's no way that anybody could go through that circle and figure out where to go. These guys are all commenting on that, and that's what they do. That's what design is all about. So I feel that we should shape Phase One in discussions, and set a budget for Phase Two, and then let them go at it. So that's my concerns. We got people here, the audience, if there's any discussion. I'll hear public discussion now.
Bill Norcross, a resident of Double B's Drive. I think the signage program is a very valid project. It's something that's really needed to attract people here to the Route 27 sign out there. The entrance is...it's pretty well-dated. But I have found that other communities...take example Highland Ridge. Highland Ridge has a consistent, clear set of signs, and they're very friendly, and they kind of reflect what is in the community. It's a community of cultural, rural type of thing. I'm kind of in favor of, like, white fencing and that sort of thing like that. But on the sign upfront on the entrance, I had suggested in a crew design, and I sent some pictures to everybody, that it should be a very large and curved sign, so it could be seen on probably about 270 degrees of an angle, so you see it coming and going. I think if any message board sign could be put up, it should be put up inside the community for special events, PGA tournaments, anything's going on in the community, that sort of thing like that. Angled on one side, so you can see both sides, coming and going. I think the feedback that I have is that people really don't like flashy signs, you know, with the little lights that go around and all that sort of nonsense. It doesn't really bode well for the community. It's okay for Burger King, but it's not. I think when you get into signage, I think, and the community at whole, you think about maybe a project to be inclusive as far as changing the mailboxes on the streets so they all look alike. Highland Ridge is a good example, again, of consistency. And I think it's a...it should be part of the project, whether it be small at one time, one street at a time, but I think it should be included, and the people should have the option of changing their mailboxes to be more consistent. I think there should be a lot more community input as far as what the signage should be, too. I think that a lot of people have good ideas. One company which you did mention wants to just replace the signs. That's...to me, that's not a good idea. I mean, these signs have to be completely changed. And just for example, you take the North Sign across from the Wild Turkey. It's a big monument, well, it's like Grant's Tomb, and somebody put lights up there that are kinda pink. Well, guess what? You're driving at 60 miles an hour, you can't see that sign. I mean, it's just a blur. They changed the signs on Sunlight Boulevard to halogen, white halogen lights, and I guess it's been very popular. Everybody likes it. So I mean, just a simple change in lights can affect the signage. As I say, I think it's a very good project. I think it's needed here. The signs, as I say, the feedback I get, clear, concise, in large print, without being too busy, like we have the signs out right now. Thank you.
Anybody else? Bring the back of the board. David?
I think the big key to this whole project is what supervisor works with the chosen group. And I, you know, hopefully, it would be Supervisor Miller, because he seems to have a better concept of what...so I don't...I'm really not comfortable with this. I don't know how we can make a choice, other than...we can't make a choice, because we don't know what Don Bell's...well, we can, because we know what Tangram's cost for developing the master plan is. It's $59,000, and that includes project management, along with developing a master plan.
Yeah, and that's negotiable, too. Pardon? That's negotiable, too. I'm sorry. It is negotiable.
Oh.
I mean, it's not fixed in concrete until you sign the contract.
Okay. In other words, you could take the project management phase out of it and say, "This is what it's gonna cost."
We can shape it the way we want to. I mean, you've got three different firms in there. I mentioned my concerns about the landscape input in Phase One. We can discuss that. We can discuss certainly the budget that we have for Phase Two, which would be approximately $200,000 after we get through that. There's all sorts of things that you can negotiate at contract time, so...
What about Don Bell?
Well, Bell has the opportunity to propose for Phase Two. I mean, actually, that's where the money is for most guys.
That makes sense, but I'm struggling with putting 60 grand out there ahead of time and getting locked into that, and then having to say, "Well, we got 60,000 already involved in it, and this is what it's gonna cost, and it's gonna be another $450,000." So that's what I'm really struggling with. I think Tangram is fairly...really capable of doing the design, and then after that, all bets are off, as far as them developing the RFP, setting the budget up for finalization of the sign. So in that regard, I'm okay with them.
Okay. First of all, the $59,000 that they've proposed for Phase One is a starting point. Okay? That's where you start. And if you have some concerns about certain aspects, those costs, or certain inputs, that's what contract negotiation is all about. Secondly, we're only gonna spend $400,000 if we decide to spend $400,000. Right now, we have $200,000. What is it, $250,000 for the whole thing?
A little clarification, if I could. The original budget was $250,000 for landscaping, implementation, and the plan. We added the sign concept afterwards, which I think is needed. And when we discussed increasing the budget to take care of the signage portion, the consensus of the board during budget discussions was, "Don't put it in now. Let's see what our responses are, and we'll adjust as we see fit in the future."
Yeah.
What we asked for was a company to come in. If you go back to the original RFP, we asked for a company to come in and give us a design plan, not only for signage and landscaping, but what we call wayfinding, how to get from point A to point B. We also said we want some design for the entrances to the golf courses, and we want some signage designs for our major buildings, our major destinations. And that was all included in the RFP. And we also asked for multiple options, as well as public input, where they would actually come down and hold a public hearing for the community, probably after the first of the year was kind of our timing, where people would give input into what they liked and didn't like, and eventually, you would work your way to a set of documents where you could go out to bid for the signage and the landscaping. That's what we asked for. Bell didn't do that. What they did is they said, "Here, we'll do your signage, and by the way, here's the landscaping." Tangram basically did what we asked for. So I'll just leave it at that for y'all to decide. We can...again, if you decide to choose Company A or Company B, the next step would be to negotiate a contract, lay out all the particulars, timelines, dates, deliverables, et cetera, and bring that back to the board for your consideration.
Yeah, but just to be very clear, and you've been through this many, many times, I have too, from the consulting standpoint, but we control all the negotiations.
That's correct.
We control the budget.
Correct.
And if we set a budget figure of, say, $200,000 for landscaping and signs, that's what they're gonna design to.
That's correct.
So it's not gonna get out of hand, because we're not gonna accept it getting out of hand.
How about the logistics of it? We control that, too?
I mean, logistics from what standpoint?
The Tangram guy says in the body of the document, he'll be available for every phase of this thing if needed. He'll come in from these...
Jacksonville office.
But when you roll up the numbers, that's when you gotta do the four trips divided by 32 or whatever, 3,200 bucks. That's where you get that.
Yeah, but that's a maximum amount of money in his proposal. It says it will not go over this amount.
Yeah. So, you know, if that's the way it's gonna be happening, but this $250,000, Mikey, you said there was no...that was...that didn't include the signage. The signage is extra?
That is correct.
Well, what's included in the $250,000?
We originally set it up as for landscaping, all the entrances and the golf courses, and yeah, that's at the entrances and golf courses, design and implementation, and we set a budget of $250,000.
But there's no signs involved in that?
No.
Well, I don't think you're quite correct on that, because the whole thing was the upgrade.
We upgraded the sign aspect of it after we set the budget for $250,000 for landscaping. Signs were never considered at the original time we set the 250. And when we talked about it...
I don't know about you, but I never agreed for $250,000 for landscaping only.
I understand, but that's what was in there now, in the beginning. That's what we carried forward.
We have a difference of a thing.
Yeah, we'll go back and dig that up.
But let's get back to the basics. Do we control contract negotiations?
Yes.
Do we control the budget?
Yes.
Do we control the deliverables?
Yes.
Okay. What else do you need to know? But Kurt, $60,000 seems to bother you. It's not a bill.
It isn't the 60 grand that bothers me. I think what bothers me the most is the location of the consulting firm, number one. Number two is, in their presentation, I didn't really like pretty much anything they presented as far as examples of their work. And I'm just not comfortable with them to start with.
That's a fair position.
And if you go to Don Bell's website and look, maybe only three or four people showed up, and they got a staff of about 30 people. They got their own design group, you know, that maybe they didn't present it that way, but they still have their own designers on their own staff. So I would prefer to look at going to Harbinger, which is the sign guy, and have him come in and go against Don Bell, and have...make them make a presentation in terms of their consulting, if you will, and their sign...
But they're not consulting. They're hardware people.
I know that.
They haven't even...they haven't...
Pardon? As we're gonna debate it...
They haven't even, they haven't, pardon, as we're gonna debate a little bit, but they haven't, is there any place in the Bell proposal where they've even discussed upgrading the median, or, or any of the other areas? Not one thing. It's, you have the sign here, we'll give you a sign here.
I understand, but also Tangram only made a comment about moving the wayfinding sign. They talked about the speed limit on twenty-seven. Those are the only two issues that they brought up, that to me were different, that were different than what we already got.
You read this?
I did read it.
And didn't they, didn't they take us through entrance by entrance?
It doesn't matter. Don, in my opinion, Don Bell did the same thing, but he did it mechanically. He did it in terms of form, instead of, or function, instead of form. So...
Okay.
And I guess the other thing I would like to see would be the fact that we take the landscaping package out. In other words, we don't connect, we have a sign phase, and we have a landscaping phase, we don't, we don't combine the two.
Works for me. Rick?
Well, when I asked a couple of questions of the Bell Group, and they, they were talking, because I think our signs are pretty old, antiquated, needing replacement. And I asked a couple of questions about whether they were gonna tear them down and rebuild them, or what they were gonna do. And they said that they had their people look at them, and that they could actually use the foundations of the signs we got there, and just build new structures for those bases. So, they've looked at those signs, they know what they've got to work with. So, Bell Group has looked at what we've got, and they know what they can do with them. So, I was kinda impressed with the Bell Group. And I think that with all the other groups that they've worked with, and the background that they have, I think they can do us a great job. I go along with, let's take the landscape out of it for right now, let's get a firm price on the signage. I think the signs that we have right now are wrong, they're the wrong colors, people can't read them when they go down the roads, until you get right on top of them. They need to be signs that you can read from a block away, or a block and a half away. So, that's my, my opinion.
Do you realize that then we just throw out Phase One? If we take the Bell proposal, it's what, a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars right off the bat? That's it. That's the budget. They don't have a Phase One. They haven't responded to the RFP. Have you checked their proposal against the RFP, point by point? But that's, that's, that's where, that's what you're getting at.
You just got through saying, we can, we can negotiate with them and sit down and talk about it. So, let's sit down and talk to them about it, and find out exactly what it's gonna cost us.
How are you gonna...
They didn't give us a firm price, did they?
Who, Bell?
Bell.
Sign by sign. You go through their whole proposal, sign by sign, total a hundred-and-ninety thousand. No new signs, no difference, no discussion about upgrading this mess we've got on Sunlight Boulevard, nothing.
Oh, yes.
Oh, where, where is it? I'm very happy you showed it to me, I didn't find it in there. I didn't find one comment in there about circles, or, or Sunlight Boulevard, or anything. They came in with a light sound and awe show, which is very good. They are very good at what they do.
They weren't, they weren't talking about changing the sign on Sunlight Boulevard?
Well, changing the signs, same place, same thing. They weren't talking about anything about diminishing the power pole structure on Sunlight Boulevard, which we have agonized over, and can't afford to change, because it's like a two-point-three million dollar price tag. None of that, none about the circle, none of it.
Bell.
So, that falls on us, then. We pick these guys, and again, they're good, they're good at what they do, but we're gonna be designing our own signage system.
What we need is a design. Now, whether we separate the landscape and the signage, that's fine. What we need is a design, and for us to approve a design, and then, and then get it, and then RFP, the implementation of that design, that's what we need. And I think this Tangram group is probably the best group to do that, in my opinion. I don't think, Bell, Bell, Bell does a good job, and like Kurt said, mechanically, he did it mechanically, but I don't know if he's got the right conceptual idea that this, this other group's got for...
You got an alternative. You can pick Bell, for example, and we can sit down and negotiate with them about the creative aspects, and if that's not satisfactory, then we can, we can go to another group or rebid it. You can do that. Either one of these groups, right, Mike?
You choose one, and you try to negotiate a contract. If you're successful, fine, if not, you eliminate them, and you can go to the second.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
That's true, but we have to keep architecture. The statute applies CCNA, and specifies, specifies...
Specifies the areas that you can do that, and signage is not one of those areas.
Right.
And what, so, what do you mean by that?
Well, what that means is, if you wanna issue an RFP for somebody to come in and design your sign system...
Which we did.
Which is what we did.
I totally agree. Then you can award that RFP for the design, all right? And then, in my opinion, you should award a separate bid for the actual construction. It might be the same people, it might not be.
Which is the way it's set up to begin with.
I'm, I'm with you. You asked the question, I'm just telling you.
Yeah, no, no, I said, I said we can pick Bell, and we can sit down and negotiate with them, right? Or, are you saying legally that we accept that one-ninety, or we don't accept the one-ninety?
No, in fact, I'm not suggesting you accept the one-ninety at all. The pricing was not part of the RFP.
Right.
Well, that's what, that's what we got with Bell.
I don't disagree with that, that's what they submitted. I'm trying to tell you, that's not what the RFP says.
No kidding, no kidding.
That's right. The RFP says to award the design.
Right.
And that's where you need to be. The concern I had with your statement was, that if, if we award the design to this person, then we try to negotiate a contract, and we can't negotiate a contract, then we can go to award the design to the next group. That is true with CCNA procedures, that is not true with the regular RFP procedures. And this falls within regular RFP procedures, because it is signage, not landscape architecture, which is one of the four categories under CCNA.
But we started out with landscape architectures included in the RFP.
I got the, I got, I got a few pages of the RFP. The first, the first sentence in the project description is, "The district desires to retain a vendor to create a wayfaring signage plan design that will provide the district with a document of entrance and directional signs that make up the urban landscape in the public areas of the district."
Yes, sir, I agree with that. That's a great RFP. That's not CCNA, but it's an RFP, meaning that if you awarded the design to a particular group, then you have to enter to a contract with them. If your contract negotiations fail, you're not free to go to the next one, you are free to re-advertise, and, and go that way, in my opinion.
Well, in my experience, and, you know, I've been through this a few times, if a proposer is not responsive to the terms of the RFP, that proposer is disqualified. And if we get very hard-nosed about this, the Bell people were not responsive to the RFP. They weren't.
And that would have been an excellent position to take prior to...
That's right.
The interviews.
But we wanted Bell, some of us wanted, wanted that, and they're good.
Yeah.
In what they do. But that's not what we asked for. So, there you go. We can throw up our hands and rebid this, right?
Yes.
We've gotten in trouble before by awarding a, awarding a job to somebody that didn't respond correctly to an RFP, and somebody comes back and...
Challenge enough.
Yeah.
Well, you know, here's, the way you would do this is, if you wish to award it to Bell, you'd simply award the design phase to Bell, and you would specifically make sure your motion says, we're not accepting any, any cost proposals for the signage, simply the design work. And that, and I think they, their submission is good enough to qualify for design work submission.
I don't know how you can change the ballgame and not face some pushback. I don't know how you can do that. It's not the way it works. You can't just say, Bell has a design, we didn't ask for just design.
But they, well, I thought we just did.
Yeah, we did.
You just read it.
I mean, I mean, not design, I mean, you know, construction and the signs.
We didn't ask for construction. Bell went over and way beyond the RFP. That's what happened.
We asked for construction documents, that's what we asked for.
The fact that they've shown their cards regarding pricing, it works to their destiny, not to the district's destiny.
Okay, guys, what do you wanna do? So, you know, just tear it up and go back to square one.
Well, I'd like, I guess I'd like to go, according to what Mr. McClure said, let's, let's go to Don Bell, and for the design work, and see where that goes, and if it doesn't go anywhere, then we start over again.
I, I wanna make it clear. I'm trying to tell you what legally you can do and should do. I'm not recommending...
No, no, I'm not.
...or another. It sounded like you thought I was recommending Mr. Bell.
No, I didn't mean that. I just meant the fact that what you said, they have offered enough information to qualify for the design phase, is what you said, right?
That's what I said. And obviously, we have a division here, if you wish to make such a motion, and see where the board goes, you can, or the other way, but if it's gonna be...
All right. Let's, let me try to clarify this for a minute, okay? The Bell people have given us a sign design, and a price for constructing and placing the signs, is that correct?
Right.
And Tangram has been responsive to the, the RFP in terms of analyzing our situation and setting up a system, a wayfinding system, not just replacing signs. And that includes the turtle run, includes the clubhouse sign, includes a look at the We could limit our contract with them, if we choose, to those elements, with the idea that, well, then that would be, Harbinger would be out of it. There's no point having Harbinger on their team. And we've also taken the landscape architect, which, architecture, which would be in support of the signage, that's the design and placement. So, what we'd have is, we're negotiating for a signage system, and then it would have to be up to Bell to adjust their, their price structure to whatever we decide to accept. Does that, that make sense?
I think I understand what you just said.
You guys?
I guess my concern about, again, Tangram, what they did offer, which was very minimal, and Dave's point is that their linchpin to their presentation was, they wanted to build a monument in the median, and I looked at it this morning, and there's a big building in the way, you wouldn't even see it. Plus, you got the power poles and everything else, so, and our track record with consultants is not very good, to begin with. We hire these guys, they come in, they give us their ideas, and we say, ah, we don't, we don't believe what you're saying, so we're not gonna listen to that either. So, I, I'm just not comfortable with Tangram, as simple as that.
A sign, a sign, an entrance sign in the median, you wouldn't be able to see it till you got to the intersection.
Yeah, it's too late.
I mean, he had a good idea about the visibility, but then he took the visibility out when he moved it back...
Put it back in the basement, yeah.
And that's, I was confused, that was, that was a problem for me. And there's a lot of cost, a lot of cost in the north entrance. The only, the only, and I don't wanna, don't wanna get away from point here, but the north entrance, there's only locals. We wouldn't have to do anything to that north entrance. Or the south entrance, I'm sorry, the south entrance. It's not an entranceway, it's just a, it's just a road that comes into the district, and anybody coming there is our local, coming and going. What we got there is sufficient, as far as spending a lot of money for no value. So, I don't know, maybe, maybe, maybe what we need to do is, is get in touch with this... Let me go back, let me go back to what you said, do I understand? No, I don't understand, Dick, run through that again, what you just were going through.
Rich Farthing?
Well, about, about, about working with, working with the Bell Group on the design phase of this, or the Tangram Group on just the design phase of the signage.
Well, my suggestion would be to take Tangram as an independent group, and charge them with development of a signage system, which would specify upgrading, specify placement of existing signs, placement of new signs, and so forth, in other words, you get a system. And then Bell would, would take that, respond to that, in terms of design, construction, and placement of the signs. I just, Kurt worries about the, the aspects of Tangram, I worry about the lack of creativity in terms of a system for Sunlight on the part of Bell, so that's, that's where we stand.
I guess my concern about Tangram is, again, the examples they gave were lackluster. I mean, look at Don Bell's portfolio, I mean, look at the signs that they designed, and maybe the budgets... Well, listen, let me finish. It's just that creativity-wise, I, Don Bell offered more creativity than Tangram did. Tangram came in with some mostly west coast-type presentations, because that's obviously where their business is. Don Bell's business is in the southeast, it's in Florida, and to me, they understand this area better. I just think the design work is better from Don Bell, even though they went the extra mile. I still say their creativity is better than Tangram.
Let me ask Mr. McClure a question. Can we, we were back and forth about, the way the RFP was responded to, can we work with Don Bell on a design concept for the signage?
In my opinion, the way the RFP was set, yes. And their response to the RFP was over and above what we requested, but at the same time, they did submit a design proposal, and that's what we asked for. So, I think it's in conformance with that, but I also think you should not award any type of signed, signed construction as part of this award. And that, they did resubmit that as well, or submit that as well, which I would reject that portion of their submission, if that's the route you choose to go. I mean, I'm, again, I'm not, your question was, are they responsive? In my opinion, they were responsive to the design, they were overly responsive, not underly responsive, so...
Do we need to, if we went with them, do we need to set up a, allow a certain budget, I guess, for design? So, we, so we know what, what we got there?
That would be part of your contract negotiations.
That's right.
You would come in, and you would say, okay, this is what we want, A, B, C, these are deliverables, and then we'll negotiate a budget and bring it back to you for consideration.
Let me ask President Miller a question. Since you're gonna be the point guy, I think, on this thing, will you think, will you think you'd be comfortable with working with Don Bell on, on this project, in the initial Phase One on it?
I'd be comfortable talking to him about the scope of work that we're asking for, and see what they say. I still have reservations about their attention to the system requirements of our signage in Sunlight. If they can satisfy that, then I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Yeah, well, you, I think you got probably a better idea than Tangram's got on this whole thing, or Don Bell, as far as, as far as... whole thing, or Don Bell, as far as, as far as, uh, psychology, or, uh, the.
Are you comfortable with me handling that, Kurt?
By me?
Are you comfortable with me handling that?
Um, yeah, just kidding. I would be.
What was that? We had it. You've had it. Okay, then I guess we need a motion, whoever wants to.
Well, you're running the show, why don't you do it?
Well, we have to have a vote first, you don't know which one I'm going to vote. Well, you're proposing, Bill, why don't you make the motion?
Um, I propose that, uh, we enter into contract negotiations for design work only, uh, with Don Bell for our signage, uh, and landscaping program.
No. Wait, wait. Can I offer this? Don't take the landscaping part out until we get into the actual negotiations. Leave that in, and let's separate it so that you, you have a separate number for that, because I don't think your landscaping plan is going to be that expensive. It's your landscaping implementation that's expensive. At least you have the flexibility, because your landscaping is an integral part of your signage.
If you let eggswood run wild, it's going to be, uh, what, two hundred and thirty thousand or something? So, we, we need to control that.
Exactly, and that's the point I'm saying, is you basically have phase, you have the signage phase, you have the landscaping phase. Uh, at least for the contract discussions. Now, you, when you come back with a contract and it says, here's what signage costs, here's what landscaping costs, you can X out one if you don't like it. At least you have flexibility that way.
You do need some integration in the design phase, so you can visualize.
Yes.
What your sit, situation's going to be at every location.
That's my point.
For example, let me just talk about Turtle Run. What we have right now is a little narrow path leading into Turtle Run. And we have yet a, a whole parcel at that entrance that we own and we control. And we could make one hell of a nice entrance, open that up and so forth. And a large part of that would be more than the sign, it would be landscaping. So, you need to look at this stuff on a situation-by-situation basis. Uh, for example, we, we've done enough, and even Casper, uh, have done enough on plannings that we don't have to go hog wild on that, so we can control that as well.
Actually, it's Turtle, I had Turtle in mind when I said, don't rule out the landscaping, because that will be an integral part of it.
Yeah, we do need, but we probably don't need, well, we certainly can't afford all that.
You just, you just made, made the same point I did. You got a better idea than anybody, but as far as best concern, but, okay.
Well, at this point, you have a motion for.
Make a motion.
The design work for the signs and landscaping, design work only.
Right.
And there's, we're waiting on a second and then go from there.
I'll second it. Uh, could I ask a question?
No.
Will, will that include construction documents?
Yeah. Construction documents would have to be part of design, I would think.
Okay, I'm just, just clarifying. That's how we get in trouble, is when we go over, we're shooting pieces. So, if that, that's the case, then that's good. We need a second.
Yeah, I gave him, I already gave a second.
All right. Um, now we had public discussion, right? Quick. All right. There's life after death after all.
Yeah, the girls want to play cards.
Good morning, again, Bill Northruss. Uh, during the discussion, you said there's nothing wrong with, and I say there's nothing wrong, with, uh, us pulling up signage in your landscaping, or your design work, or your construction. Well, what I suggest, and it seems to me that we're putting the cat before the horse, we're getting a design company, but we don't know what the community really wants. Now, maybe it's, it'll be in a few further discussion. What I suggest is that Mr. Miller, because he is very astute on these particular projects, have a select committee of four, or five, six, eight people, and come up with some suggestions from these design people to make sure that the community is in tune with what you want to have.
Public participation is written into the first phase.
I understand that.
And how, how we structure that remains to be seen. But certainly, it would be presentation to the community at large, and we could have an advisory committee. But let's, you know, first things first.
Well, I was thinking that you already want to give an RFP to some company now, or award them some kind of bid, without more discussion about community, you know, response.
Now, we have to get on with that part. You would have that situation with any company, and the community's not going to pick a company. It's our responsibility to pick, to pick the consultant.
Well, I understand that, you know, because of the sunshine law, everybody can't get around a round table and have a discussion about that, I don't, without a public opinion, uh, public.
Forum.
Uh, forum. So, what I'm saying is that, I, I just think that more public participation, we only have two or three people here from the, uh, the community, I think there should be more. I think there's a lot of good ideas out there, there really are.
Well, that will come during the phase. Anybody else?
Make this real quick, Pat Holmes. The one thing I don't like about is, if I design something to do it, and then I have, uh, Bill, build it, that's the hard part for me, because one company can say they can, they can do this, and another company says, I can't do that. How do you split them up? That's what I have to say.
Thank you. We lost one of our members here. Any final thoughts from the board before we vote? Go wait for Rick.
The steering controls, or everything?
Oh, the engine shutdown.
Nice, and if the airbag went off.
Did you buy any gas?
That's a first.
Okay. All right, Allison.
Supervisor Halbert?
Yes.
Supervisor McCollum?
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
President Miller?
I guess, yes.
Okay, did that include?
That's enthusiasm.
Did the motion include Miller being the liaison? Um, I don't think we included Mr. Miller's liaison in the motion. You need to, you, you need to point someone from the board to.
I make a motion, I make a motion that, uh, President Miller work as a, as a board intermediary on this design phase of this project.
I'll second that.
Did it?
Could have voted.
Public, public comment. Back to the board. I guess Allison.
Supervisor McCollum?
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Halbert?
Yes.
President Miller?
Yes.
And for the record, I will pin that this action taken was in conjunction with the award of the bid, because that was, this is special purpose, single purpose meeting, so.
Okay.
The, uh, as Mr. McClure said, this is only really for one item, which was the signs, the discussion of the, and selection of the sign and landscaping consultant. However, there is a discussion item, uh, that was suggested to me, that perhaps we would move the, the meeting date of the November meeting, which I believe is the twenty-first, because it has a conflict with the event here at the golf clubhouse. And rather than try to poll all of you, which I can do under sunshine for meeting changes, I suggested that you just discuss today, if you want to move the meeting, if so, to what date, and then we'll have to advertise it accordingly, like we did this meeting. Uh, and we have time to do it. So, really, what I'm looking for today is, are there any consensus or desire to move the meeting, and if so, to what date, and then we'll advertise it accordingly.
Let me, I don't quite understand. You said we had to advertise it, does that mean we have to have another special meeting?
No, we just have to advertise the fact that we're moving the meeting date, because we advertise it once a year for certain dates, and then we're changing that plan.
Uh, I suggest the date of the nineteenth is okay with me, I don't know about the rest.
That's a Wednesday, right?
That's a Wednesday.
Yeah, it's fine.
I'm going that, going the nineteenth. I'm going that, from the fourteenth to the twentieth.
Following Wednesday.
You can do the following Wednesday.
Following Wednesday, we. That's before Thanksgiving, I think.
It's okay, we're going to be here.
Uh, that makes sense.
No, I, I don't understand why we're making this change.
We've got the member times four tournament, there's conflict.
Well, the MGA should have known that, because we had.
The MGA knows it.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
No, I'm not going to whoa. The MGA knows it. I, I give, I give them the schedule, uh, when the schedule was set.
Long time ago, right? And they should have, they should have scheduled this tournament around that.
They didn't.
Well, that's their fault.
Well, they're not going to move the, the.
That's their fault. We have, we have a duty as board supervisors to be here for those meetings, and that's the way I feel about it. I'm not in for moving the meeting.
Well, obviously, you're not playing in a tournament.
No, I wouldn't. Yeah, but Rick, Rick makes one very good point, and, you know, who's wagging the dog on this thing? Um, I think it's, it's a responsibility when we set, what, we set, uh, our calendar meetings, uh, when in spring?
No, we set them in, uh, November or December, for the following year, calendar year.
Okay, I, I think it's, it's imperative on, on our part, that we make sure that, that everybody's on board with the schedule. And Dave's point is that they knew about and they still schedule. Well, that's, that's not going to happen next year, because that's the ultimate absurdity, when you've got a men's golf association dictating the time of a meeting. And that, I agree with Rick. So, David, um, when we set these meetings, we need to make sure that we're avoiding conflicts in this next year. And that means that the MGA has to be on board, your guys have to be on board, and we have to be on board. I'm not saying that we dictate to you guys, oh, that's.
Kind of what you're saying.
Kind of what I'm saying. But, uh, no, I'm not. I'm, I'm saying that, uh, if we've got certain conflict situations, and this is not the first time this has happened.
We historically do that. We sit down with the golf people.
Well, it, it doesn't work, does it?
No, not when they add something after our meeting dates are set.
Ah, okay.
That's what happened.
Well, then we just have to go on record that, that, you know, they're a participant, as we set the meetings, but once the meetings are set, they're set. Is that satisfactory this coming year?
Yes.
Well, how about just changing the meeting to Wednesdays, which eliminates all conflicts, period? Every meeting is a Wednesday.
Yeah, then we get to the element irony.
Which is?
We're changing forty years of schedule of governance in the community for the, for the Men's Golf Association. I don't think so.
Well, things change in life.
Well, that, that discussion has to happen whenever we just set the schedule for the upcoming year. But the fact that they, that they scheduled that, pretty upsetting to me, and it's like, well, we just, we just did it. So, you know, we can't do anything about it now, it's already set, other than, I guess the board of supervisors can tell the MGA, you're not going to have that tournament on those days. And maybe that'd be a good lesson. I don't know. You know? Because, you know, they're, they dance to the, to the beat of one drum in a MGA, and that's, that's maybe, maybe, you know, I was, I was pretty upset about it, but I, I'm planning on playing in it, I'd like to play in it. Uh, so, anyway, that's all I guess.
So, it's on the table, as we move it to the following Wednesday, is that correct?
Uh, no, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Well, that's the following Wednesday that we want it, right?
Oh, I'm back, yeah. And I'm back for that Friday. I kept that, the twenty-first open.
Do we, do we have any conflicts with the community center that day? Before Thanksgiving?
We're all looking at Supervisor White's point, and that is that he scheduled already that he would be away and then come back for the Friday meeting. But, but if we, we put it to the following Wednesday, Larry, then I think you're okay, is that right?
I'm fine with the following Wednesday. I, I kept the twenty-first open, because I knew it was our regular meeting, so.
That'll work.
Twenty-first is a Friday.
Yeah.
He's talking about.
That's right, but then we go to the following Wednesday, which would be the day before Thanksgiving.
Right, okay.
The day before Thanksgiving.
Yeah. What date is that?
I don't know.
The Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Twenty-six.
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 I'm certainly hoping it's going to be the last time we have to do this.
Well, if it's not, if you all are uncomfortable about it, I, I can cancel. I don't know who else is planning on being, planning on playing in it.
How many on the board are playing in it?
Three of us.
I think?
You're playing, right?
I'm playing.
Playing, I'm playing.
I haven't signed up for you yet.
Well, anyway, it's on the table, as we move it to that, that Wednesday, the twenty-sixth. Have a motion for that?
No.
No, just consensus.
Just consensus?
Twenty-sixth.
It's okay with me.
Okay.
All right, um, that ends the part of it, but Larry, you had, uh, under new business, I believe.
No, new business or just discussion?
Discussion was fine.
Okay. Uh, I want you to keep in mind, we've got the Latin American tour coming back up in January. Uh, I think as board members, we need to do some thinking about that. What we need to, what we want to charge next year for it, is I, if I remember correctly, Dave, you can refresh my memory, I think it's set up for the year fifteen at eighteen thousand dollars, is that correct?
We, we did not set up a second year. We only signed a one-year contract with them. We didn't do two, and this year is, is sixteen. If we do next year, it will go up.
Okay, this year, you're saying fifteen?
Sixteen. Sixteen thousand this year.
Sixteen thousand.
And then after that, we would sign another contract if they want to come back, and we can charge, you know, we can go up at that time.
Okay. Uh, tell me, how many rounds did they end up playing? I know they played four in tournament, they played, what, two or three practice rounds?
They, they play, they play one practice round that the tour pays for.
Okay.
Um, then they play four rounds after that. The weekend prior, you have the regular players coming in and playing their own practice round, uh, which they pay for.
They pay.
The tour doesn't pay for that.
Okay, what else are we furnishing with that tour?
The only thing we furnish them is just a place for them to come in, and then we have a buffet lunch for the players that they pay for.
They pay for?
Uh-huh.
What about, uh, everything on the driving range is covered in their, uh, one fee?
Everything in the driving range is covered. It's part of that, that sixteen thousand dollars. We usually take a thousand out for the driving range.
Okay, um, what is the Latin American tour charging each one of those players to come in, or approximately? Last year, I think you said something about fourteen hundred, or somebody said it.
I, I, I do not know. I, I would have to get back with you on that.
Okay.
That, that practice round is included in that sixteen thousand?
The Monday, the one practice round is. The, the Sunday, the Saturday, Sunday before, the player covers it.
Do we have most of the players come in, then?
Usually, they do come in over the weekend. Usually, they do come in over the weekend.
What I'm thinking, what I'm saying is, I think we need to bring, have this as a discussion on our next meeting, and we need to sit down and put a pencil to it and make it at least worthwhile for us, uh, or if we're taking one complete golf course away for almost a week, uh, I'm not saying it's got to be profitable, what I'm saying is, we can't lose the fortune on it. So, you know, it's something for the, for the board to think about between now and the next meeting, and then have a discussion on it.
Well, it's already, the contract's already set for this year.
Yeah.
We can't change that.
You're talking about next-
No, I'm talking about the following year.
I'm talking about-
Well, you said the next meeting, which would be November.
Huh?
You said the next meeting, meaning board meeting. Did you mean the board meeting?
Yeah, where the board would set it, talk about it in the, in the next meeting, to set it, if we get the contract for sixteen, not, not for fifteen.
When would you do that contract? When would you?
We usually, um, the event comes along, we talk, you know, they, they let us know if they're going to be interested in coming back here or not, and then at that point, usually sometime in March, April timeframe is when we kind of go back and forth with them on the contract.
Sometimes prior to that date and in time for us to, for them to react to it, can you put together a set of numbers showing us what, what we're getting out of it and so on and so forth, getting up the information from them as to what their entry fee is, and, and to see if it's something that makes sense or it doesn't make sense?
Yes, sir, that'll be no problem.
What do the numbers say at the present level?
I mean, you know, in January, um, it's a hit or miss. We can have a good January because of weather, um, and if the weather's bad, we can have a-
No, I'm speaking to Supervisor White's, um, point about we're taking effectively one course out of commission for a week, um, and we've done that. This, this will be, what, the third year?
Yes, this will be the third year.
Well, you ought to know what, what the impact is now. I mean, is it on the plus side or the negative side?
It's on the, it's on the plus side, in my opinion, because you, you have a week that they're going to play regardless of what the weather's like. So, you're going to get fifteen to sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars that week, regardless if it's raining, windy, or thirty degrees outside.
And what if it was great weather, what would we get out of that?
If it's great weather, then we'd probably break even.
Anything else?
Yeah, can I bring up another subject? You know, Mike, you know, according to my emails, that I'm upset about, how did those, how did those parpods get on the street side of that cart path? And I know, I know, I know it was in this memo, but it's, it was on, the memo was a different subject, it was stuck down in there, and by golly, it got by me, but there was no discussion about, hey, I know you guys, there was several discussions about where they're going to go. It was agreed that there was room on the other side of the cart path. Duke Energy told, told us the same thing. Everybody on this board thought they were going to be hugging that wood so it wouldn't be so obvious, but there they are, right out halfway, little more than halfway between, between that side of that cart path, and, uh, and it's really upsetting. So, what happened there?
I'd have to go back and look, but I will also suggest that, because we, we looked at it with Duke on Monday, and, uh, if you put it behind the sidewalk between Sunrise and San Bruno, you'd have to take out every oak tree, because it'll be directly under the lines. So, you would lose that row of oak trees if you did that.
Well, yeah, but, but don't you think that it was worth a discussion to bring it back to the board and say, "Hey, look, this is what the board wanted, but now they're going to be there."
I'd have to go back, uh, Mr. Halbig, and look at that. Uh, I'm not sure we even control that, because it is a county permitted, it is a county road, and they do the permitting, we just have input into the permit. Uh, but I will suggest, if you look at it, you, when you see-
Oh, I looked at it.
Because we've only got a couple of feet behind the sidewalk that they could go in.
Well, why did they say then it was plenty of room?
I do not know.
I mean, even later, we're going to have to start doing, doing something for the benefit of this, of us.
I cannot tell you why Duke said what they said.
Well, I don't know what they, why they said it. It's just like that capacitor bank that they've stuck in there, and, I mean, we can't do anything about it. It's, it's ridiculous. But it should have come back to the board for, for some discussion and, and, and say, "Look, this is where they're going to go, I know what you guys wanted." But there was no, I guess there was no question, uh, back to Duke saying, "Hey, no, we don't want them there, we want them over there." I mean, it's in the right of way, isn't it?
Uh, not necessarily, well, yes, it's in the right of way now, but again, that's a county permitted project that we have input in, but the county makes the ultimate decision. We also have water lines under and behind the sidewalks that they'd have to work around. And I'd have to go out and physically see where they are. That may have been a conflicting problem as well.
Well, you say there may have been, they should have been-
No, sir, I know we have two water lines that go through there.
That's all I got.
The biggest issue was the trees.
Yeah, on a related question, um, all these signs along the right of way, Sunlake Boulevard, I'm not talking about our signs, I'm talking about, you know, the, the, the speed signs, the yield and stuff like that, is all, is that all dictated by the county or by the state? How does that-
On, on the boulevard?
Yeah.
It's county.
I, I believe that, uh, Mr. Norcross made a point, there's some like ninety signs, and I'm just curious what our options are regarding the, perhaps a replacement or elimination of some of those signs.
Uh, if you have some you'd like to have replaced, we can request the county, or remove them, we can request the county to do it.
So, that could be a part of the, the design process.
I think we can request it, yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I see on item six, we have public comments. I believe, John, that that would be, that would be eliminated. We've got our public comment on our special discussion, so there's no more to do.
Did I say one more?
Yes.
Um, I noticed today that Mr. Halbig, Halbig, Halbert, excuse me, didn't tell the public address person that he had to bend over and talk into the microphone. In other words, the microphone was high enough that they could hear him. I also heard from residents, when they listen to the audio portion of these meetings, that they can't hear half of what is being said. So, for almost two years, I've been hearing this every meeting, telling people what to do, and I'm just kind of disappointed that the district hasn't taken that issue up and presented a better PA system for these meetings. Um, it's been an issue ever since I've been on the board, and nobody seems to want to correct it.
I think the PA system records if you use it correctly. Problem is, is when you sit back and don't talk into the microphone, it doesn't pick up.
Well, it certainly doesn't work for the, uh, public portion of it. These people are bending halfway over because the mic isn't high enough.
Well, we, we can get a higher mic.
On the podium.
And that's why we take one back.
I mean, it's working fine here. I mean, why don't we just look at the, I'm not picking on you, I'm saying, you know, that's, that's your function here, you know?
We can have, uh, we can have, uh, the folks that do our sound system come in and recommend some upgrades for us. I can do that.
Didn't we just do that?
Yeah, we did.
Well, it certainly isn't working, I guess.
And we went to a wireless system.
Whatever the system is, it's not working as far as I'm concerned.
Point's well taken.
I'll have, uh, we'll have the folks that do the, it's really only one company in the county that really does that kind of work, we'll have them come in and look at it. By the way, this is not our system.
Well, maybe I'd-
Why don't we make it our system?
Maybe you'd better buy it.
Yeah, make it our system.
Yeah, we borrowed this one.
But the point about bending over at the public podium is a good one. We could easily change that.
Well, it's, well, I know, but it's been going on forever.
Okay, anything else, Dave?
No, it is, on what Kurt was saying about the sound system, there's only one group in the county that's done all this far up to now, maybe we ought to go somewhere else, outside the county, to get somebody else to look at it, because it doesn't seem to be working very well.
Where did you borrow this from?
From a local church. It, I suspect it came from the same company that we've been dealing with.
Okay, we're done, meeting adjourned.
John, it's you and, it's you and Tanya and I that are all. Tanya, let's get a different mic stand, let's have a-